Well, greetings everyone and welcome to our regular meeting on Wednesday, April 20th, 2022. It's nice to see so many faces in the audience. At this time, I would call for a roll call.
Ten present, one presiding, one absent.
Let the record-
Sorry, that's it.
I'm sorry? Okay, Ross, go ahead.
Ten present, one presiding, one absent.
Thank you. Let the record show that Commissioner Manken is excused this evening from our meeting. And at this time, I would ask everyone to join us with Commissioner Sorch and our prayer and pledge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Fellow Commissioners, Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which will greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bow. Direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Alleged allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, John. All right, moving along, I'm going to ask for approval of the minutes for the April 6, 2022 regular meeting. Commissioner Frederickson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I move to approve the minutes from the April 6, 2022 regular meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes that occurred on April 6, 2022's regular meeting. Would everyone please vote? Would anyone care to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Eleven yea, zero nay.
Motion passes. Items not addressed on the agenda. We are adding in agenda items, so I refer to Commissioner Frederickson.
Before we do that, Madam Chair, I would like to add a friendly amendment to the agenda.
Okay, well, we probably would do that at the, is it something on the consent agenda?
It is, yeah.
Okay. We can wait until we get to the consent agenda?
Okay.
Okay. And so now we can add that item on the agenda?
Okay. All right. In accordance with the provisions of Section 6 of Rule 6 of the Rules of Business of the Council of Commissioners of the City and County of Butte, Silver Bow, State of Montana, the council hereby finds that an emergency condition exists which requires that the council rules be suspended to allow communication 2022-202 to be added to the agenda of the April 20th, 2022 regular meeting of the council. The reason for the suspension is as follows. Communication number 2022-202 is a communication from Mike Archer, Director of Capital Solutions for Headwaters, R.C. and D., and the Butte Local Development Corporation. Mr. Archer is requesting the council's approval to use 221,959,000 of the Anaconda Arco Loan Fund to provide funding to Praxis Sims LLC. Mr. Archer submitted an earlier letter regarding approval of this loan through communication number 2022-195. However, in order to provide additional details regarding the terms and conditions of the loan and to provide the promissory note, Mr. Archer has submitted communication 2022-202 and is requesting it to be added to the April 20th, 2022 regular meeting. Based upon the foregoing and to allow this matter to be acted upon, the council hereby finds that an emergency exists which requires the suspension of the council's rules to add communication number 2022-202 to the agenda for the April 20th, 2022 regular meeting. I move to approve the suspension of the rules to consider placing communication number 2022-202 on the agenda at the April 20th, 2022 regular meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the suspension of the rules allowing us to place communication 2022-202 on the agenda this evening. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Anyone care to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Eleven yea, zero nay.
Motion passes. Okay. All right, we will continue with this communication later on in the agenda after we get through the consent agenda. Okay. So, holding that off for a little bit here, I will go forward. At this time, the chief executives report, well, there is none, but I do have a report from JP, and he did send me a text. For anyone out there that doesn't know, JP's daughter was in a really serious car accident yesterday on the way up over to Missoula to go back to school, and it was a pretty bad accident. And he had to get right over there yesterday afternoon, and he's been there all day. But this is what he wanted to tell everybody out here, because we do have this big meeting with a lot of important things that we need to go through. And he said, "I want to apologize for not being at this important Council of Commissioners's regular meeting tonight. I know that there are a lot of important issues on tonight's agenda, and I am truly sorry for not being in attendance tonight. As many may know, my daughter was in a bad car wreck driving back to school in Missoula yesterday. I am happy to report that she is okay and was even released from the hospital yesterday. She is on the mend and at home with family. I am currently in Missoula attending to her dog Kiwi, who had surgery this afternoon." Apparently, Kiwi actually went through the windshield and was injured. Kiwi is also on the mend and will survive despite being thrown out of the vehicle during the accident. "I cannot thank everyone enough for the well wishes and support during one of the hardest times I have faced as a parent, the call from a stranger saying, 'Your child has been involved in a bad accident.' My family has been blessed because my world could have been so much different today if it wasn't for my daughter using her seatbelt and the modern technology in our cars. I want to thank Madam Chair for taking my place tonight and leading tonight's agenda. I know you are in good hands. I also want to thank all of the Butte Silver Bow staff for stepping up to help in my absence. We live in the best community in the world. Butte Silver Bow residents always come to the support of their own. I am truly humbled." And that's what JP had to say. Keep his daughter in your prayers. He sent a picture, which I can't really show you on my phone, but the car, it was a little car, but it probably was newer, because you could see it had airbags completely around the whole thing, and it looked like it took an aluminum pop can and just crushed it. It's just a miracle. So, anyway, thank you. I don't really have anything else to report, other than we do have Earth Day on Friday, the 22nd, and it's at Newn at the Clark's Park, and I believe there's food involved, and people bring their tools and go about doing some cleanup. So, that's still on the agenda that I know of at Newn at the Clark's Park. And at this time, I would just like to advise everybody, I'm not voting, I'm actually presiding, so, being a Commissioner too long. So, actually, there are just ten Commissioners and one presiding here. So, public comment, and any item on tonight's agenda, if you would like to make a comment on anything that's on tonight's agenda, that includes something that's on the committee, the whole reports, all of the reports that were done, that anything that's on this agenda tonight, and if you'd come up to the microphone and give us your name and address for the record, and I'd be happy to have you do that. So. Mr. Renoir, hello there.
Good evening. My name is Robert Renoir, and my Butte residence is 15 West Woolman. I'm here commenting to the committee, the whole, on communication 2022-172 regarding the MOU in question. I had a chance to look at the engineering report, and I myself work for county government, and I manage professional consultant construction contracts for King County in Seattle. The first thing I noticed on this MOU is that it was not authored by anyone who's actually qualified as a structural engineer. I don't know if anyone noticed that. So, I took the liberty to ask my daughter, who is a structural engineer, and she works for a major engineering firm in Seattle, and her specialty is historic retrofits. She sent, I was going to make some of my own personal comments on this, but I think her comments are more relevant. She states, "There's a number of items that bothered her. The engineer notes that there is a low likelihood it could survive a maximum design seismic or wind event. First of all, that is not an appropriate bar to set for evaluating existing structure. The national standards for evaluating existing structures, the IEBC and the ASE41, allow reduced seismic forces. If the expectation was that an existing building needs to meet maximum design seismic events, not a single existing building would pass that check unless it was constructed in the last couple of years." The engineer talks a lot about deterioration of the exterior brick. That is a moot point, since the wall in question is an interior party wall that has not been exposed to water and weather. The comment about testing the brick's compressive strength is also perplexing. Brick typically has a great compressive strength, and I have never heard of anyone performing such a test. Where brick often lacks strength is in shear or the mortar. Report did not suggest investigating those items. "The above portion of the shared wall is actually seeing a reduction in both gravity and seismic wind forces thanks to the demo of the adjacent building." That's assuming the building question, the original building to be demoed, and she referring to the shelter, or the-
Rescue mission.
Thank you. By that metric, the wall demand capacity ratio will actually be reduced. The one potential issue she sees, as the engineer did not mention, is that it looks like the lower portion of the wall is a retaining wall that might be relying on adjacent building for bracing support. She goes on to say, "There's nothing in code that would require a building to be retrofitted unless the adjacent building is being demolished. Nothing in the code would require adjacent owner to build that CMU wall that was suggested by the initial report. Also, what is the plan for that lot? If they're trying to build a new building, then they'll have to build a new wall anyways for the new building, so costs couldn't be an issue. Any comment about open storefront walls on the short ends of the building is completely irrelevant since the party wall in question had zero impact on those." Now, from a personal standpoint, I also see it completely irrelevant, the discussion of the status of the wood windows, for example. And I think that detracts from their report. I'd like to conclude my comments in saying that her comments are highly qualified. She's been cited, she's worked on a number of major projects as a structural engineer, and she specializes in that in her firm. But my personal comments is, that is also my neighborhood. I love Butte. My family group is from here, from the first territorial senses, and I've been coming back ever since, last 15 years, trying to take care of my own historic buildings. And it just breaks my heart to see Butte squander their historic resources, which are the last remaining buildings. These things, these problems on these buildings are not insurmountable. I think that it's not a question of a single building here, a single building there, but it's the block of buildings. Those buildings belong to the street and to the people, even though they're in private ownership. So, take that into consideration and cherish your resources and do the best you can with them. There's people willing to buy these buildings now, more than ever before. In the 15 years I've been coming back and forth frequently to Butte, I've never seen more positive action in Butte than I do now. There's a lot of promise in this. Don't throw it away. I plead with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Renoir. Any other comment on any item on tonight's agenda?
Hi, everyone. Brian McGregor, 133 South Main Street. Good evening. Well, this may be redundant, but I just wanted to, since we're on the topic, I came up somewhat prepared to talk about it. The hard part is trying to figure out where to start. Some of us citizens have been reading these documents all week, perhaps some of you have too. And I don't think time allows for me to go on about all of the problems with these documents, but I'll just touch on a few, and maybe someone else would like to pick up where I leave off. It says on the top page here, 135 West Park Street, limited scope, structural assessment. And that sort of describes the rest of these documents. It says in here that they were not able to get to large portions of the building, that being the thrift store buildings. But does go on to describe some problems with a roof that's sagging. And we stared at this for a minute, and then we realized that what is being described here is a portion of the building's, which seems to be an add-on. And the reason they could see the sagging is because the rafters are exposed, and they're two-by-sixes. It's a much lighter-built piece of the building. It's not part of the original buildings at all. Yet, it's sort of portrayed as if it is. And there's a lot of things like that in here. There is comments made about the value of the buildings and their historic importance being diminished somehow because they've been, the word "patchwork" was used, or "patches," but that's not described or justified in any way. So, we don't know what that is that the author is talking about. There's several things like that. Robert touched on a couple of things. Some of this, under assessments and recommendations, in fact, there's a lot of this in here. It's talking about how to shore up the buildings or how to repair them in order to save the existing buildings. That part, like a lot of this, seems to have been skipped over, and we've heard some people, council people and others, just picking up literally single sentences out of this, such as "building in danger of imminent collapse." That's taken out of a paragraph. The rest of the paragraph is talking about, as Robert touched on, seismic and wind events, which makes this building no different than any other building in Butte. The bottom line is, our observation, from what we have seen through our own observations of the building, just as layman, there doesn't seem to be anything really wrong with this building. Furthermore, this idea of taking the building down because of the adjoining walls, we were talking about this, me and a friend, and we took a walk around uptown. And every gap between two other buildings where the old building is gone, including the Pithian Palace next to the Silver Dollar, the old walls are still there against the existing building. They've taken the building out, and the building is gone. If the standard is that those existing walls somehow are a threat to the next building, or somehow a safety issue, then there would be no buildings in Butte. You'd have to take down the bull building next door, and then the peak inn, because they all have the same exact adjoining walls. All these buildings are alike. Furthermore, the M&M, why didn't they take down the party palace to the left, or the building to the north, and on and on? It doesn't make any sense. And that's kind of my takeaway from this thing. I really would hope and recommend that the MOU is discarded, and the city start over with something that's a little more palatable to the citizens of this city and honors their love and their concern and their expertise and their knowledge, you know? We didn't just get here yesterday. People have been watching this stuff go on for years and years and years. And I feel like we've all become experts in this field through this. Plus, we've had a lot of people come and inform us about these things. And it's nice to be listened to a little bit. And I'd like to thank the Commissioners that voted the way they did to push this thing off until we can get a better look at it, so you can get a better look at it. But I don't think you're going to find much good to look at in this. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Anyone else care to make a comment on anything on tonight's agenda? Going once. Oh. Mr. Ward?
Jim Ward, 2022 Wall Street. I guess the horse isn't dead yet. Number 19 on the Committee of the Whole, which is what we've been talking about, and I don't want to turn this into a confrontational issue. It's easy to dig heels in when we're sort of threatened and feel like, well, we went down the road one direction, and maybe that wasn't the right path, so we dig our heels in and don't turn around and look at the facts. So, I don't want it to turn into that, but I want to really look at this report and what its intentions are and what it actually says. And the public safety exclusion says, "The engineering report states that the building located at 123, 125 East Park Street is at risk of collapse in its current condition and would still be at risk at collapse even if a new western wall is constructed." It does not say that in this document. It says it's at risk of collapse during a major earthquake or severe weather event, exactly like the building we're standing in, exactly like every building in uptown Butte. It goes on to say, "Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code, blah, 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 allows demolition to abate unsafe or dangerous conditions, and the attached engineering reports indicate that this is an appropriate measure to ensure public safety." It does not say that. In the engineering report, it says that the purpose of the site visit was to investigate unreinforced brick masonry walls that is shared between the building that has been proposed to be demolished at the project site. Every building in Butte built during that era and almost till today has, if it's made of brick, it's unreinforced brick. But the important thing here, it says, "During demolition of the PSB, it was discovered that the shared masonry wall supports both BSBs and BARMs floor and roof diagrams. The PSB could not be removed without safely compromising the BRM." So, what it's saying is, SEA, the agency that made this report, was told that they were not contracted to ever investigate the wall. There are no engineering reports on whether the wall is actually safe or not. What it says is, "SEA has been contracted to provide temporary shoring design for 100 feet of the BRM's floors and roof during the demolition of PSB. In addition to the temporary shoring design, SEA will also provide conceptual drawings for the replacement of the shared masonry wall to use for bidding purposes." This is not an engineering report. This is not an architectural or structural investigation. This is merely a bid for this conception that the building needs to be reinforced while 134, 135 is demolished. That did not happen to be needed at the party palace or OMG. It likely does not need to happen here. This wall is likely extremely safe. "In the findings, the BRM main floor diaphragm has been replaced, and a new concrete footing supports the new floor diaphragm. Through inspection, it was determined that the foundation wall fully supports the shared masonry wall. That means that that wall is not in danger of collapse. Nowhere in this document does it say that the actual roof on the main building is sagged. It does not say that any of the walls are bent, sagging, out of shape in any way, shape, or form." The only thing in this, well, actually, this document, we'll go on to the next one, this document merely says, and I'll go back to the closure, "Observations found in the report herein are intended to provide a conceptual report to the Butte Silver Bow Government for construction bidding purposes." Not inspection, not structural, how strong is this building? Is this wall any good? "At the time of inspection, much of the structure was not visible or safely accessible for observation. This is an observational report, and they couldn't even see what they were looking at. In addition, member materials properties and geotechnical properties could not be confirmed and were assumed. This evaluation is limited in scope and extends to reported and is not intended to be a comprehensive structural evaluation." Not intended to be a comprehensive structural evaluation. Another report was then followed up a few months later. "Its purpose, as stated, project description. The purpose of our site visit was to investigate Butte Rescue Mission Building in regards to its probable longevity after the demolition of the adjoining building. It was not contracted to see if the wall was structurally sound, if any of the building was structurally sound. It's literally there for the longevity of the demo, after the demolition of the following building." So, this report is a bit of a reflection of the other report, but as Brian was saying earlier, there is one place where it insinuates that the building is unsafe, and that is, there's literally an add-on roof at the very back with exposed rafters. That portion is detached from the main portion of the structure, and it is acknowledged that the roof needs a proper inspection. They didn't get up there, they didn't look at it. It literally says in this report that a contractor needs to be hired to look at the roof. I can go on and on, but I've only got a few minutes, and I think everybody gets the idea. But again, this is the second report, and I'll read the last paragraph. "Observations found in the report herein are intended to provide a factual report to the Butte Silver Bow based on visual observations. At the time of inspection, much of the structure was not visible for observation. In addition, no analysis of the existing construction has been performed. This evaluation is limited in scope to the defects reported." Defects reported, not discovered, reported. It is not intended to be a comprehensive structural evaluations of all elements of the building. So, if this is an engineering report, it doesn't even say how long the wall is. It doesn't know how high the wall is. It doesn't know the width of the wall. It doesn't know if the two walls are tied together or how they're tied together. During construction on brick structures, bricks are laid out in certain manners, depending on the height of the wall, the width of the wall, how much weight it's going to carry, floors, and et cetera. It doesn't even identify the method of use for construction with the brick. This is not an engineering report. And as I got to looking at this, we're going to tear down 135. There's another building to the east of that. at this, we're going to tear down 135. There's another building to the east of that. How come it didn't get a inspection done on it? How come its wall is not getting investigated? And the mission is comprised of 123 and 125. That's two buildings. Why do we have to tear both of them down? So based upon a walkthrough visual inspection that identifies in its own words that it could not visually see what it was sent there to look at, we are going to tear down all of these buildings? And it literally doesn't make sense. And I'm not here to save the mission. I'm very concerned about the mission. What concerns me is when this precedent is set, we can use an instrument like this to literally tear down any building in this town, any building in this town. And as Brian also said, say, for example, and I'm not picking on any particular buildings or whatever, but I just know it, the ax bar, say the ax bar burns down. Are we going to tear down the first building to the east? Because it's attached to another building, and another building, and another building. And we don't stop tearing buildings down on that block based on the fact that they're attached to other ones until we get all the way to around the bank that's on the northwest corner, northeast corner. Literally, this town would be empty if this document was allowed to be used, and quite frankly, if this public safety exclusion is continued to be allowed to be used in its present format. I know this isn't the place tonight, but we need to rewrite this public safety exclusion. And I'd like to thank the mission for sponsoring my wardrobe tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Any other comments from any items, on any items on tonight's agenda? Anything further? All right, all right. Thank you, everyone. At this time, I would move on to Section 1, Bid Openings, Public Hearings, and Other Presentations. The first item is a public hearing, and this is Item 1, Communication #2022-146, Danette Gleason, Finance and Budget Director, requesting Council of Commissioners authorization to schedule a public hearing on April 20th to take public comment on amending the fiscal year 2022 District Court mandate costs for legal services under Title IV-E Funding. The grant funds from the State of Montana Department of Health and Human Services Child and Family Services Division are to be used for legal services to represent youth in cases of child abuse, neglect, and dependency matters as set forth in Section 41-3-01 at SecuDere MCA. Danette. I should say, Director Gleason.
Madam Chair, Commissioners for the record, Danette Gleason, the Finance and Budget Director for the City and County of Butte Silver Bow. This public hearing tonight is to take comment. As Madam Chair had stated, it is grant funds that we will be receiving from the State of Montana Department of Health and Human Services Child and Family Services Division. This is not new funding. It is, however, new funding for the local government. In the past, these funds and these services, legal services, have been provided for many, many years by Mark Vasservich, and prior to that, Ross Richardson. These funds were directly paid to that law firm for the services, and this past fiscal year, the state has decided that they would like to no longer have a contract in that status, that they would prefer to pass these funds through the local government, and then we can contract back out for these services. I believe we were the only other large city in the state of Montana that was operating in that capacity, in that form and function. So they have decided that they would rather contract with us locally, and then we would contract with the law firm. We anticipate getting approximately $45,000. Again, that's just a projection for these services, just based on three or four years of information that we were able to gather.
Thank you. And before I go on, I would ask County Attorney Joyce for proof of publication.
Madam Chair, there is proof of publication, and it does appear to be in order.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Gleason on this item before I open up the public hearing? Thank you. At this time, I open the public hearing. I will call for any proponents of this particular item that is requesting us to look at. If there's any public comment that is in proponents in favor of it, I'll ask for a second call for proponents. Third call and final call for proponents. Okay, going on to opponents, anyone like to speak against this proposition? Second call for opponents. Third and final call for proponents, opponents. Seeing none. Closed public hearing. Thank you. On to our presentation tonight. This is Item 1, Communication #2022-158. Karen Burns, Community Development Director, requesting Council of Commissioners authorization for time on the April 20th, 2022 Regular Council of Commissioners Meeting Agenda to conduct a presentation on the Uptown Master Plan. Director Burns.
Thank you, Chairman Shaw, and members of the council. I am going to click the slides and turn it over to our Citizens Committee to make most of this presentation. As you know, this has been a long process. We're at the tail end of it. We presented to the Planning Commission on March 24th, and that was very well received. And so they're here tonight to present to you the final draft of the Uptown Master Plan. We're very proud of it, and very proud of the amount of participation that we've had in this plan. So I'm going to turn it over to Shanna Adams to start us off.
Welcome, Shanna.
Good evening. Thank you. Thanks for having us. So tonight, we're going to present the Uptown Butte Master Plan. It's been, like Karen said, kind of a long process. You can... Okay. I'm going to actually have Julia read something that she wrote kind of early in the process that really sums up, I think, our efforts here. She said it really eloquently, so we kind of put this in our first page of the master plan.
Madam Chair, Council of Commissioners, thank you for having us this evening. My name is Julia Crane. As most of you know me in my professional capacity here at Butte Silver Bow, but I am speaking tonight as a private citizen in the city of Butte. And I am someone who has contributed my thoughts and ideas to the Uptown Master Plan process. Most everyone in the world has a place that captures their imagination and inspires their curiosity. And for me, that place is Uptown Butte. I've heard every generation of my family speak about the heart of this city with a fondness and affection reserved for the people we love most dearly. For most people in Butte, Uptown is the place, Uptown and the places within it are treasure troves, where moments have been shared, tragedies mourned, and milestones celebrated. It is a place that is utterly fascinating, and I spent a great deal of time reflecting on that. It's place, this place and its immense potential for our community. Uptown Butte isn't accidental. It's a place created deliberately by commerce and industry for the hardworking and willing, laying the foundations of our architectural gems with always a bet on our future. A future many said was bleak, and yet at every turn, we've defied that fate and endured. Uptown Butte screams, "We're still here," and that undeterred spirit lends itself to a very bright vision. I believe goals for Uptown must be very deeply aspirational, so much so that my position is incorporated into the forward of this plan. My hope is this plan inspires each one of us to commit our very best to the district, and encourage others to do the same, to ensure Uptown Butte remains a vibrant reflection of everything it once was, everything it is, and everything it can be. And in that note, I'd like to turn the podium over to my colleagues, and for Shanna Adams, who will describe how the Uptown Master Plan can help guide projects and initiatives for Uptown Butte and its future.
Thank you, Julia. Shanna?
So this plan feels really good. The renderings are beautiful. Hopefully, if you've had a chance to kind of look through the report. But I just want people to know that it's more than a feel-good plan. The recommendations that came from the plan came to us from listening and learning from the community. And these are things that will lead to investments in Uptown, expansion of the tax base, better jobs, preserving the history of Butte, and saving the architectural resources in Uptown. Go on. So this slide just kind of goes through our plan by the numbers. You can read this and kind of digest some of the things. We'll talk about some of the meetings we've had. We've had well over 50 meetings with the community. And for me, that's probably been the most informative and the best part of this, is just listening to people and learning from them. I guess I will point out, so our organization, our association, is made up mostly of business owners, building owners, professionals in Uptown. And we felt like it was important to have the business community kind of lead this effort. And we, you'll see on there that we've raised $11,000, and we have done no fundraising whatsoever. We had a couple of larger checks come from other nonprofits, but for the most part, these were $100, $50, $25 personal checks. I would come into my office and have a pile of checks on my chair, and just notes from people saying, "We love this. We love what you're doing. We want to support it." And that was really heartening to me, and kind of kept us going throughout the process. You can go on to the next one. So why do this plan? Plans work. So we spent a lot of time looking at all the plans that have been done in Butte in the last 30 years, and which ones were successful, and maybe which ones weren't so successful, and kind of tried to parse out why. So from the very get-go, we tried to run the through line of implementation through this process. And you'll see the last chapter in our report that Karen's going to talk about is the implementation plan. And it's kind of a monster table. And frankly, it was pretty difficult, because we have 30 recommendations and projects in this plan, and we went through each one of them and tried to think through who's responsible, who's accountable, who, what resources do we need to get it done, what's the timeline? And those are hard questions to answer. But we tried to do that for each of these things, and where will the resources come from, and how will we check in, and how will we correct course, and all of those things. So I encourage you to kind of take a hard look at that implementation table. Let's see. And, sorry, can you go back? So let's see. Okay, plans work. The community requested it. So we started this process, actually, four years ago, April 2018. There was a community visioning meeting, and this is kind of what came out of that meeting ultimately. I think the community talked about, you know, promotion, saving our historic resources, all these different things. And it was really clear to me at that meeting that, like, we need to bring everybody together and get all of these ideas, all of these issues, like, down on paper, and kind of prioritize things and come up with a plan. So, community requested it. It was also stated in the comprehensive plan that this plan be completed. And, let's see. Sorry, go back. No, you're good. Okay, funding. So a lot of these projects are going to need funding, and we need a plan that was developed by and supported by the community to go after all of these funding sources. You guys all know how that works. And then why now? This is probably also kind of obvious to everybody. But growth and change is happening in Butte, and it's coming at a more rapid pace. And we need to be ready. We need to be ready with the policies and plans in place, so that when you guys see projects and proposals come, you can say, yes, that's in line with our community vision, or maybe it's not, or maybe it needs some tweaks. But we want to make sure that Butte remains as authentic and wonderful and weird as we all know that it is. So that's kind of the heart behind the plan, and you're going to hear from some of the folks on our committee.
Good evening. Chair Shaw, council members Josh Bryson, 160, Carissa Way, acting as a private citizen, representing the Uptown Butte Master Planning Committee. We all know that for a plan to be successful, you have to broadly engage the community and gain their support. You have to engage the key stakeholders of that community. Our committee has accomplished this through strategic engagement that's occurred at over 50 meetings. The team has gathered input and ideas, and identified key issues and needs. This slide shows the formal meetings that we've hosted. In addition to these meetings, those that are not listed, we're able to form the recommendations within the report and define our vision. The master plan vision is based on four pillars. First, Uptown Butte needs to be a clean, safe, walkable, and vibrant destination. It has to be welcoming and well-kept. It has to draw you in, and it has to keep you there. It needs to be the centerpiece of this community. And not only the centerpiece of our community, but why not southwest Montana and the entire state? Uptown Butte can be Montana's premier urban core, and that's a stature that was once ours not too long ago. The integrity of the architectural resources of Uptown are key to economic revitalization of Butte. We need to maintain our unique and historical architectural resources, and preserve those that can be preserved, while respectively, respectfully designed for our future. We have to continue to tell our stories, the stories of Butte, America. Our stories are the fabric of our culture. We have to be able to tell our visitors and our future generations of the cultural significance of this place we call home. I mentioned previously the issues and needs identified by the community. The first is to provide a clean and safe Uptown. It is a foundational need. It is a fundamental requirement. We need to create an environment that protects and prioritizes the residential users of this space, our visitors, our shoppers, our people that visit our Uptown. We need to, we can do this by extending the curbs. By doing so, you can shorten the crossings between two points of the street, and reduce the exposure time of residents crossing the street to traffic. We can alternate materials to provide visual guidance while crossing a street. That only provides visual guidance for the residents, but also disrupts the sightlines of oncoming traffic. By installing bollards, we can provide actual safety measures while providing unique eyepieces. By reducing the heights of lights and increasing their frequency and providing warmer lighting, we can provide a sense of security in the evening and at night. And we can always use more trees and plantings. It's an indication of life, and it creates a sense of well-being for all of our residents. And while we're at it, we can install public art in the event space. Not every building needs to be monotone. We can just have displays of creativity and create vibrancy. Our second key need is to address vacancies and deterioration by championing redevelopment. The Montana Studios Project is a great example of this. It's exposing the authentic character of our Uptown building, four buildings that have been hidden for as long as I can remember, prior to my birth. There are other examples. There's the Exerdance Building, Rudolph's, YMCA, Solange just reopened a new location. While all these are promising examples, we can't allow them to be the exception. We have to normalize it. It can't be front-page news. It has to occur throughout the community. We need to aggressively promote opportunities for redevelopment, and enable project proponents in overcoming any financial challenges. We need to preserve and activate Uptown's historic architectural resources. The Archives is a remarkable success, a living example of what can happen when a community acts with intent. The structural and architectural integrity of this historic fire station has been preserved, converting it to the Archives, the keeper of all of our stories, and a public meeting space. There are dozens upon dozens of other buildings that merit the same preservation and activation. We need to improve pedestrian safety and walkability within the Uptown Butte corridor. This is the intersection of Montana-Galena. It's 80 feet from one curb edge to the other. If I were to cross that street with my kids, I would have to walk past one lane of parking space, two lanes of southbound traffic traveling at 35 miles per hour or faster, one turn lane, two lanes of northbound traffic traveling at 35 miles or faster, and an additional parking lane. With the exception of our fine businesses, why would you slow down? There are no pedestrian indications. There is no constriction of the traffic to slow speeds, and there's absolutely no signage away from you telling me where I'm at, why I should be there, or where I should be going. Throughout the community, and particularly at Uptown gateways, we need to prioritize pedestrian safety and pedestrian experience over that of our motorists. And lastly, we need to preserve and sustain our authentic character. We need to celebrate the diverse cultures that were responsible for founding our great town that continue to serve as the backbone of our success. And while we look forward, and while we maintain our aspirations, we have to move to adoption. We can move from aspirations to measured outcomes, and achieve the common vision for all of Uptown Butte. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Cassie Wick, 820 West Mercury. I am doing a clean, safe, walkable, and vibrant destination. As many of you know, I became very passionate about walkability a number of years ago, and so I've visited with this council several times about that. And so the first thing I will say is, there is nothing more refreshing than a group of people getting together with the people getting together with the same passion point to move forward with a vision for this city. And I never want that to be dampened. So as we think about this, let's use these people for the good of the future of Butte. So for a clean, safe, walkable, vibrant destination, some of the recommendations are establishing a business improvement district, which could create, you know, cleaner streets, more safety, added, you know, security measures around. And this happens in a lot of other cities, which can be replicated. Pedestrian lighting, one of our favorite things and the top of the list for people's requests. Improve appearance of vacant buildings throughout the Uptown Core. As you know, when you'd walk through the streets when there were boarded-up windows, nobody wanted to visit that section of town. Incorporate complete streets designs that improve pedestrian and bicycle safety. Also, a lot of individuals from this community have advocated for better bike safety and better pedestrian safety. And the measures included in this plan are really exciting and they do actually work. Enhance connections to the regional trail system. We have incredible trails. We are so lucky to have them. And to be able to expand upon it with this plan is a really great vision for the future. Identify and prioritize alleys for pedestrian improvements. Behind fifty-five eighteen, we did a demonstration of an alley that could be made better. And prior to the fire, it was incredible. And those lights in the back of that alley made everything feel good. Now that they're burnt out and laying against the wall, I'm like, "I hate it back here." So, just the littlest things can make a big difference. And we have all of these spaces where that energy can be infused. Incorporate trees. We love tree. Medians, also incredible. We have very few examples of this, but down on Harrison Avenue, when you are crossing between the trail system, there's one pedestrian island where you have a safe refuge if you're trying to get across that busy street. Those medians are really important for pedestrian safety. Green space, we have lots of great green space, but I think we can, this plan shows ways to use it better. Create plazas, parks, more green space. And then, I think one of the most exciting things, the original mine yard, we used full-time. I was doing a workout class there this summer. And anytime that gate was open, three, four, five cars would drive in because they wanted to be in that space. And then we would have to be like, "No, you can't, you can't be in here. This is not allowed." So, the vision to allow folks to use that year-round is something that is being asked of that. And then that grand staircase up there really is a vision that we should be getting behind. So pedestrian lighting, the best way to look at this is the examples that are happening. So we are doing some really good things in Butte. The one space where you can feel that pedestrian lighting is happening is at Northwest Energy. And so you can tell that if you went to Solange or out to eat at La Casa, you would walk by there and it felt good to be in that area. Almost no other spot in Uptown Butte feels lit. And so, we are excited for a plan to move forward with that. And in fact, we got a SARDER grant to do a demonstration of that. And so we're going to partner with our friend Ray Rogers to hopefully rehome a couple of lights that already exist in Uptown to start to demonstrate what it feels like to do this plan. This whole intersection is a real problem. We had a really good opportunity for Park Street to be made way better than it, than it was. And there were really great improvements that happened, but some things missed the mark and this area was one of them. To get over to the Motherlode, as we know, many, many people need to cross that street. And as it is right now, it's a diagonal crosswalk. There's like those flashy lights and they work fine. But we can do better. And so as we visualize, you can do the next one now, this curb extension, it allows people to stand and wait, which they're already doing when they're trying to get to that place. But it also shows intent to cross. So any curb extension allows you to know that a pedestrian wishes to cross there. We know that example from our mid-block crossing on Park Street. That's our one example of in-town where you can tell, almost nine times out of ten, someone will stop for you at that spot because they can see that you want to cross there. By headframe, I always just like walk into traffic because that's the only way because they could never see you past a parked car. So those are the examples. We have lots of them in-town. But curb extensions are a big part of our vision. And I know there's some concern about snow removal, but they exist in all types of cities with snow and they work. And anytime you're in a city that has that, that built environment, you want to be there. And then obviously the connection, I mean, I love these colored bike lanes. They feel way safer. And I will say, I'm someone that uses the bike lanes. And I know we've had a lot of discussion about bike lanes, but people use them. And they feel better when they're done and they're there and they're present. And I am also an advocate for people with disabilities. So we like to remind people that while most of us are driving around, there's a whole population of people that live in this community that are bus riders, that are bike riders. And we need to always be planning for every citizen that lives here. And then that looks better and we all like that. So just more of that would be great. Same with this one. You want to hang out there? And then again, just if you've ever looked at something in Butte and you wanted it to be better, that's what someone told me once, is you can make things better. So then that's why I started coming to hang out with you guys, because I was like, "Oh, great." Like if you care about something, you can say something. And so, as we look around, this plan did that. It looked at all these spaces with like loving eyes and it took them and it transformed them. And we have such a good opportunity. When John and I opened fifty-five eighteen, we put a sign in that store that says, "Better is possible." And we have believed it from the beginning. And I really believe that that's the vision for the future of Butte is just getting behind this group of citizens that really believes in a plan that will work. Oh, and in the winter, it's fun. Okay, and then the mine yard again, but I already talked about that. But we just will make that better. As you can tell, I was really prepared and I'm not sure what the next slide is, but I'm, okay, thank you. Thank you, Cass.
All right. Presiding Commissioner Shaw, Commissioner's Butte Silver Bow. I'm honored and thankful and appreciative to have this opportunity to be associated with these fine folks and, and, and part of the voice delivering this considerable work today before you. My name's J.J. Adams. I'm the majority owner of the Hotel Finland Cavalier Lounge. Wear a lot of hats. When I came to town, I was a professor up at Tech Economics and in the Business Department. I've also been one of the top economic development policy advisors in the country, is the, at the US Senate Finance Committee, brought and produced the Economic Development Summit here at Tech in Town on behalf of my then-boss, Max Bockes. I've also been an investor, real estate developer, wore a lot of hats. So along the way, I've developed a good understanding of how to bring together many stakeholders, grow local economies, businesses in Montana. And, and I give you that background to give some weight to this statement that, in my opinion, this plan represents the sum of experienced knowledge and input from dozen of, dozens of neighbors and experts. And it's something that, you know, we all should take notice of and be proud of, frankly. The Greek philosopher Socrates said, "By far the greatest and most admirable form of wisdom is that which is needed to plan and beautify cities and human communities." The gathering places of our community are a monument to our collective values and efforts. Are we, the residents of Butte, the sort of people who accept trash and graffiti? Do we keep the sidewalks in good repair and clear of snow so that our elderly and disabled neighbors can get to and from daily appointments and errands? Do we build and maintain areas for children's to play? Do our women feel safe walking to their cars alone after dark? Every member of this community shares responsibility for the answers to those questions. So, my section that I'll present is on Uptown Butte being Montana's premier urban core. That's what it was built as. It was built to be the premier urban core of not only our state, but our region. And this plan gets us back on track to reclaim the rightful position of, in that role, in a very authentic way, right? So, so included within the plan, sorry, we saw one, improve occupancy. No secret that that's an issue for us. Market the Uptown Core as a unique destination because it is. That's one of the things that we were excited to learn during this process. So, in the, in the, one of the early steps, we interviewed consultants. It, it was surprising and exciting to see the response that we had from the initial RFP to hire a consultant to do this project. Some of the best in the business. One of them literally wrote the book on revitalizing urban cores. So, and, and statements in those presentations over and over were, "You guys have something really special in, in Uptown Butte. You really do." And the time and the stars are aligned because people are going back to walkability. You're, you have the, not easy, but, but unique pleasure of having foregone a lot of the, you know, the period, the period of destruction and, and that sort of thing that happened in the middle of the century where a lot of these buildings were torn down around the country. So, first-class architecture built in a walkable scale, right? And so, that, that is, that is a unique feature of Uptown. People move here, they like it, visit here because of it, because they see the pictures of it, that kind of thing. Marketing to attract retail and shopping. Promote and attract useful local services. You know, we have a few gaps where people have to leave town, so that's going to be important. Build entertainment and activity scene. Give people reasons to get into the street, you know, year-round. And, and gather as a community. You know, actually participate in, in our, in our, the living room of our community as community members. And then, and then quite frankly with my background, I would, I would argue that perhaps this is the most important on this list, is to increase housing initially. Increase housing in, in a walkable distance that supports the urban core. And the reason I say that is, is we have this, I'll put my economics professor hat on here, but we have, we have a demand and a supply problem, right? So, you know, you need more retail stores so that people come, but you need more people to come so that the retail store can make a profit and stay open. How do you resolve that? In my view, one of the ways is to build hous, you know, have more housing. If, if people, there's a lot of evidence within economics that, you know, people not only take better care of their communities and, you know, put money in, volunteer and, and do a lot of those fundamental things that, that make a community better, but also they spend dollars within a certain distance of their home. And so when you're talking, because I've done this, I've done the tours with the retail chains and the site select and all that. You know, we used to, one of my jobs used to be to bring CEOs and try and talk them into locating operations in Butte. Jeff emailed out at C-CAS is one example, right? And so, and I can tell you, the first question before they'll even schedule a tour is, "Let me see your ESRI data." I want to know how many people would live within whatever their thing is, a half-mile or a mile, quarter-mile in some cases of, of the location we're talking about. I want to know what their, how much money they make and, and that sort of thing. And the way to move that needle is, is with housing. And from what I've seen of the data, it doesn't take that much to move that needle. So, so that's, I, I, I just want to advocate for that one. And then, and then a host of zoning considerations that relate to all these other issues, right? They enhance the unique character of, of the Uptown Core. Okay. So the Italian writer Calvino said, "Cities like dreams are made of desires and fears." This slide shows a once great city. To me, this image represents fears. Fear of not realizing the potential of our community. Fear that Uptown will continue to decline faster than it renews. Fear that I am not doing what I can to make my community all it can be and should be. And this, to me, represents what it could be, a great city. To me, this image represents desire and dreams. Desire to live and work in a place that is cared for and safe for my children. And dreams, dreams, that Uptown is as beautiful and vibrant as our residents and values. So, clearly I like quotes, so I'll leave you with another one. Winston Churchill said, "We shape our buildings and thereafter they shape us."
Thank you, J.J.
Hi, my name is Matt Steitzer. And the third vision of the Uptown Master Plan is the integrity of the architectural resources in Uptown are key to the economic revitalization of Butte. And so these six recommendations are there to support that vision. So the first is, we need to market and promote the Butte Anaconda Historic, National Historic Landmark District in Uptown. And as you all know, that's an ongoing effort and we need to amplify that because it's a huge asset to our community. And Uptown Butte is essential to that historic district. The second and third recommendation go hand in hand. So we need to preserve the character of the Uptown Core. And we can do that by establishing design guidelines and standards. So buildings are one of the things that make Uptown Butte unique from, unique from a physical aspect. And it's important that new infill complement the existing architecture so that new development fits in and, and looks well, looks good. The fourth recommendation here is to develop a historic preservation website. That's an all-inclusive education resource. And what we're looking for here is a one-stop shop for a building owner, a developer, and it, and a comprehensive information that they can go to, to, to do the research that they need for their property. The fifth is to identify, fund, develop, and maintain a historic resource map and database. And some of this information is available today through the Butte Silver Bow GIS. But we'd like to make that, make that information available online to the public with additional information, information such as the history of the property, ownership, present businesses, anything that a potential developer would look to use. And the final recommendation is to identify programs providing economic incentives for preservation projects. As you know, funding is essential to any, many of these Uptown buildings. So, the, this slide talks about establishing design guidelines for the Uptown Core. Tonight, I'm standing in for a architect that's a part of our group. And when she started asking around about the buildings uptown and developing them, she, she asked, "What are the, what are the requirements to redevelop these buildings?" And she was shocked when there was none. And so that was the main reason that she got involved with this effort is because it's important to have that in, in an area like Uptown Butte that is unique as it is. And it will, that will be applicable to existing rehabilitation, or existing buildings looking to be rehabilitated as well as new construction. And we know this can be done. Northwestern Energy has done that on Park Street. And they have made a building that fits in with the Uptown Core. The Butte Archives on Court Street has, has done this. They've made a building that fits in well in the Uptown Core. And finally, this is just an example of kind of the one shops, one-stop shop that we're, we're calling for, for the historic preservation website. This is an example, or this example came from Fort Collins. And as you can see there, as a potential developer, this one landing page, you can, you can find a whole, whole slew of information from building permits and design standards to map of historic designations and resources and funding sources for whatever project you like. Thank you.
Thank you. Courtney.
Council of Commissioners, Chairwoman Shaw, my name's Courtney McKee. And I get the privilege of talking to you about telling the stories of Butte. And so I'm going to start with a tiny story of my own. I didn't have the privilege of being born here in Butte. I didn't have the privilege of being born here in Butte. I, when I first came to Montana, I have three very clear memories of magical moments that just stick with me every drop, every detail. The first is the first time you drive up the hill and the Mission Mountains roll out in front of you. The second is dropping into Poulsen and seeing Flathead Lake just spill out in front of you for the very first time. And the third was the first time I drove up the hill into Uptown Butte and fell head over heels in love with this place. I'm a very proud owner of a piece of that history, the Headframe Spirits Building. And when my husband and I bought that building 12 years ago, we recognized that it stood for 100 years before us, and that we now had the privilege and the responsibility to make sure that it was ready to stand the next 100 years. So, I want to talk to you a little bit about stories in Uptown Butte and how we tell them better. If you want to take us to the next slide, thank you. We're going to talk first a little bit about gateways and wayfinding in Uptown Butte. This image, if you can see the little circles up there, what we're looking at are opportunities for gateways, opportunities to let people know that they have arrived in Uptown Butte. Karen, if you want to take us to the next one. Hundred percent biased, love this slide. Not here to advocate for this gateway in particular, am here to advocate for gateways in general. What a beautiful way to let people know that they have reached their destination, that they have arrived in Uptown Butte, that this is the place that they were aiming for. You can see, this is a safer, as Cassie talked about, this is a safer place to invite people. This is a more walkable space, this is a more inviting space. This is a spot where you want to slow down your car, you want to get out of it, you want to park it, you want to walk around, you want to hear the trees, you want to feel the grass, you want to say hi and look people in the eyes as you were walking past them in a space like this. You're going to feel safe here crossing these streets. And like we do in other downtown communities in Montana, this is a place where you want to open your heart and open your wallet and just have a great time investing in this place. Next slide, thank you. This is another really beautiful example of wayfinding. So, if you look, we can take spaces that exist already, and we can make them easily lovely. We can communicate easier wayfinding. You are en route to Uptown Butte. We can give you a little art, we can give you something gorgeous to look at, to let you know that we care about this place as much as we want you to care about it as well. And next, we have an Uptown Visitor Center. Every single person that I spoke to on that first day in Butte and every subsequent day is incredibly kind, gracious, generous. People look you in the eye here, and when they say, "Hi, how are you?", they actually mean it. They're going to sit and wait for a second to have a response from you. Our landscape can be welcoming like that, our signage can be welcoming like that, but there's no better opportunity to be welcoming than with a human touch, to help people answer questions that weren't otherwise answered, to dig a little deeper into what this place is and why they should love it as much as we do. And we can put ambassadors out in the summer to help people do some of that navigation. We try very hard to do that at Headframe, to understand why people are there, when they're tourists, understand why they're there, why they're here, what they're doing, what their plan is, and pass them off to their next experiences. How great would it be to have people out walking around in Uptown, helping answer those same questions and direct people to their next experience? And then finally, supporting the development of the Butte-Anaconde National Historic Park. This piece is, is really important to the process here, to help us protect the assets of this amazing corridor into the, into the future. In the summertime, we average about 21,000 people per day driving through Butte on the interstate. Our goal in this work is to encourage more of them to get off the interstate for something more than, you know, gas, snacks, and a pee break. We want them to come fall in love with this place, and that should be as easy for folks to do as it was for me to do on that very first day. I don't have a great quote to end us with like JJ did, or to end my section like JJ did, so I'm going to quote my husband, John, and a sentiment shared by many of us. "Butte, America is a big damn deal, and I appreciate your, your support of this plan and the folks who have put all the hard work into it." Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney.
So, Chairman Shaw and members of council, this is my part of the presentation, so I might just sit right here if that's okay with you guys. I know that you cannot read this from where you're sitting, but this is the part of the presentation that is the recommendations that are coming out of the master plan. And as Shanna alluded to, it's broken down by those top umbrella sections, the premier urban core, clean, safe, walkable. And what we've done is we've identified individual projects under each one of those, description of that project, and implementation strategy, and implementation schedule, and as Shanna talked about, who's going to be responsible for that. We've identified responsible entities, responsible people by name. We've identified what resources might be needed, where they might come from, and how we're going to follow up with each one of those. We've also prioritized every single one of these recommendations and projects, and also assigned what we think their cost might be, kind of like when you see on a menu and you're going to order something, if it's got three-dollar signs, it might be just a little bit more than something with one-dollar sign. So, we've talked about how we can try to identify a lot of these things within the master plan. Anytime you see a yellow box in these callouts, that means we're going to need help. Volunteers are going to be needed to get these kinds of things done. And so, we really feel like this is a great way to start. There are things on this, these recommendations that are very low-hanging fruit. There are things that we don't need a lot of dollar signs for, there are things that we can just do. We can start doing these with people that have gathered together to get this together, undone, and we can start implementing some of these things right away. The very first recommendation on here, the Uptown Premier Urban Core, the very first one is to establish an Uptown Master Plan Implementation Team, an Executive Director and Board. That's something that we're going to start right away. That's going to happen very soon. I'm part of that, Shanna's part of that, and others that have been leading these efforts in these groups are part of that team, and we're not going to stop, we're going to keep going. So, the next steps for this plan is that we've presented to the Planning Commission, we, they are recommending adoption into the comprehensive plan, that this will be added. And so, the next steps will be, we will be presenting a resolution to this body in order to start that process and get that done as adoption to the comprehensive plan. So, we are very, very excited to move this forward. The priorities that have been established through those implementation schedules and through all of the work that we've done over the last few years, the number-one thing that across the board was identified in all those different categories was pedestrian lighting, and that might be the very first thing that we start with, and not stop with, but start with. And that's going to be a big project and a big plan, but it's something that we believe is very fundable. It's something that we can identify funding sources for, so you're going to see that probably happen very soon. Establishing a public art committee is something that we can do immediately. It doesn't take any money, it just takes a little time and effort, but it's something that we can do very immediately. Wayfinding and gateways, again, there are a lot of ways that we can get this done in through identified funding sources that are coming to fruition right now, through state, federal, local funding sources that we can tap into. Rewriting the zoning codes, that's starting. We're already working on that. Working with the Planning Department, we've already identified who is going to lead that effort for us through a request for proposals, an RFP, and so, we're working through that. Establishing that Business Improvement District, we're going to be starting that as well. Intersection and pedestrian safety improvements, again, same kind of thing as the wayfinding and gateways, being able to establish that. Marketing Uptown as a unique destination, developing that original mine yard into a full-time park is going to take some more discussion for sure. We have plans about that grand staircase that Cassie mentioned. Improving access to that destination is not going to be that hard to do, and something that we really need to push for. And that welcome, welcome center in Uptown, that's something that we can do. I mean, all of these things are things that we can do, but some of them are things that we can implement very, very quickly. And we look forward to doing that. I can speak, I don't think I, I misspeaking if I speak for the folks who are in the audience that have been a part of this. We're motivated, and we're ready to get this, this going. And so, you might get sick of hearing from us, but we're going to be here. So, thank you so much, and we're going to be looking for your help in getting this done. And those little yellow boxes, volunteers? You're going to need, we're going to need you. So, thank you so much. Are there any questions for myself or anyone of the group?
Thank you, Karen. Any questions? Before I call on my fellow commissioners, I want to thank everyone out there that, I mean, you guys work hard. And I, I was in the beginning in 2018, and I just decided you don't need another layer of government, but this is my district, I live a block up the street, and I am just thrilled to see so many people getting involved that, that have an investment already in Butte and have a vision. I was new here too, 25 years ago, and I remember how welcomed I felt, and I just fell in love with Butte, so I think others will do the same. And thank you all for coming tonight, and I, I love the way this is put together. So, Commissioner Thatcher, and then I saw another hand, Commissioner Shea, and then Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Firstly, this is going to sound so corny, but my heart is literally swollen with pride right now because of that presentation. I, I can't say enough about how much I support this. I think it's amazing. I think that with all of the things that we can potentially have going on Uptown, I don't see any reason why not to support this. I mean, sitting here tonight in, in the crowd, we have Montana Tech, and just in that asset itself, I think all ties in really well. I know that many comments go around town, analysis by paralysis, or paralysis by analysis, excuse me, and, "Oh, another study, why are we paying for this, why are we doing this?" This is why. We get this outcome, and, you know, we have a chance to be a good change for Butte, and I know sometimes change isn't always well-received here, but with this very project, it keeps our historic nature and our culture and everything, and allows us to grow a little bit as well. So, with that, I just want to say, if we do what we've always done, we'll get what we've always gotten. So, I hope that we can look forward to approving this down the road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shea?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I'm going to get corny too. I don't, I don't even have the words to describe how proud I am of the team and this community, and who can't get excited when you two speak? I mean, honestly, it's, it just feels so good. I don't have anything wise to say, I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. I feel like I'm going to cry. This town means a lot to me, and it means a lot to everybody that's here. We're all here for a reason, and so, I just am so proud. And when I was running for office in 2018, I had a conversation with a gentleman, and Karen Burns knows who he is, and he said the most profound thing to me. He said, "Good things happen in Butte if we let them." And I've really tried to apply that single sentence in a lot of the things that I do, so, thank you.
Commissioner Anderson, then Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you. I was inspired by JJ, so I'm just going to read something really quick and then make a couple of quick comments. This is from Shelley. "I met a traveler from an antique land who said, 'Two vast trunkless legs of stone stand in the desert. Near them are the sand, half-sunk, a shattered visage lies, whose frown and wrinkled lips have sneer of cold command. Tell that a sculptor, while those passions red, would survive stamped in the lifeless things, the hand that mocked them and the heart that fed. On the pedestals these word appear. My name is Ozymandias, King of Kings. Look on my works, ye mighty and despair; nothing besides remains. Round in decay of that colossal wreck bound the spare, the lone level sand stretch far away.'" We just saw a plan that shows what Butte can be. And before we saw this plan that shows what Butte can be, we had people advocate and speak passionately, as we have for the last few weeks, about saving our history. This plan shows what we need to do, because if we don't do it, to quote Shelley, you know, pretty soon, we're just going to have a couple of that stumps somewhere. We're, we're not going to have our history, we're, we're not going to have anything. We're not going to have this mighty thing for people to spare, we're going to have a collapsed shell of what used to be. We're going to have a face buried deep in the sand, we're going to have some trunkless legs standing. That's why these plans are so important. And so, when people say, "Why is there, why spend money on another plan?" We spend money on another plan to protect our history and to show the people of this community what this community can be. We have people who come to these meetings advocating to saving our buildings and saving our structures to show what this community can be. I really, I really liked the picture of the praxis that you had in the plan, and it might need some modification in a couple of weeks. I really hope it doesn't, but it was pointed out to me that the camera angle looking down hit the roofline of a few things that pretty soon may be a pile of dust, and I really hope that doesn't come to fruition. But wonderful job on this plan. Everybody involved did a brilliant job. I appreciate it. I appreciate the quotes, I hope you appreciate the Shelley. My, my favorite teacher, my favorite professor at Tech was my British Literature Harrington up there, and I miss him greatly, but Casparic, who taught some economics, I really appreciate him. He's probably made one of the biggest differences in my life, and I'll always be grateful for him. And I'm sure you were a fabulous job up there too. So, anyway, wonderful job with that. I hope the people who read this and see this will understand the importance of your work, the master plan. This is, majority of it is in the district that I've been lucky enough to serve and represent for the last 12 years, well, 11 years. And I, I really appreciate it, and wonderful job. Thank you very much for your hard work that you, you two did. My, my brain is a mess right now, but I remember talking to you at the liquor store many a times about your plans. When I was working up there, talking about your and John's.
I think I'm going to call a point of order here.
I'm going to get in trouble for that one. But at, at the bar, talking about your wonderful plans over there and everything, and having a wonderful cocktail there. And it shows what Butte can be, you know, five, five-on-eight, you know, the designs that you and John put together, you know, shows the beauty of what Butte can be. I, I hear people talk about, "Oh, Butte's run down, it's ugly, it's boring." I was in Bozeman earlier today to get a tooth fixed, and I have a great dental plan over there, but my brother, so I, I was talking to a couple of the, one of the patients in his office today, and he was talking about how much he liked Butte. He's from San He's from San Francisco and he just moved up to Bozeman a little while ago. And I asked him how he liked Montana. He goes, "You know what? Bozeman isn't bad, but you know what I really, really like? What really reminds me of home is Butte." I go, "I've been to New York, I've been to Paris a lot, I grew up in San Francisco and it's amazing. I come to Montana and I come to Butte and it reminds me more of home than any place else I've been." So I, I was very happy about that. So I told him he should come over and talk about that sometime at one of our meetings. I don't see him here today, so I imagine he's busy with his computer. But it, it was a nice compliment that I really took to heart as I did the rest of this. So I'm rambling at this point.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Thank you. Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, 50 meetings, wow. That's a lot of work. You know, thank you for the meticulous presentation tonight. I'm really delighted and happy to see that the people that were on the team, you know, that, you know, the small business owners and those that are in the Uptown Butte area that, and the ones with, you know, some sort of history, long-term history in the Uptown Butte area. You know, so it goes to show that one of the biggest concerns is, you know, the plans just get put on a shelf and they never get executed. You know, so I'm, I'm feeling confident by those that are involved. I'm also kind of challenging those that are involved that to keep this plan alive, it also has to be executed. You know, there's people that, you know, we, us up here, we come and go. The people that, the people that wrote this plan did a fabulous job and it's, I believe that they've got the enthusiasm to keep it alive. You know, and it's not going to, something happens overnight. You know, it's probably going to be some education, it's probably going to be, you know, an attitude change, an attitude shift, whatever. But I believe that it's a great start.
Commissioner O'Neal and then Commissioner, okay, Commissioner O'Neal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to get my two cents in. Appreciate you guys' hard work. Keep the momentum rolling. I have a quote that I made up, probably from Liquor. Thank you. "Butte number one in your hearts and number one on the license plates." It's awesome. Keep walking.
Any other serious comments to be made by council members? All right. Well, again, thank you so much. I am looking so forward to seeing what's ahead. And I will volunteer, just so you know. Put me down. Thank you. All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Karen, for facilitating everything for us. Okay, so moving along, we have Section 2. This is our consent agenda. We have Section A 1 through 4 and Section B 1 through 26. I would call for any friendly amendments or segregations at this time. Commissioner Shea and then.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to segregate Number 15, Communication Number 2022-187. I would also like to segregate Number 23, Communication Number 2022-195 and Number 24, Communication Number 2022-196.
Okay. Commissioner Fredrickson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess now for the friendly amendment. Sorry about that. So Number 7, Communication 2022-179. The agreement states that it's with Stace McKee Group LLC and it should be SIA Freight, S-A-I-A Freight, and all the attachments are correct. It was just a mistake on that communication.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anything else from any other commissioners, any other segregations? Okay, seeing none. Commissioner Fredrickson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve Section 2 of the Consent Agenda, A 1 through 4 and B 1 through 26, with the exceptions of Number 15, Communication 2022-187, Number 23, Communication 2022-195, Number 24, Communication 2022-196.
We have a motion in a second to approve Section 2, A 1 through 4 and B 1 through 26, with the exceptions of 2022-187, 2022-195 and 2022-196. At this time, I would ask for everyone to please vote. Would anyone care to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Tenaye, zero name.
Motion passes. Okay, moving into the first segregation would be Item 15. This is Communication 2022-187. Danette Gleason, Finance and Budget Director, requesting Council Commissioners authorization for Chief Executive Gallagher to sign a sub-recipient agreement for the use of the U.S. Treasury American Rescue Plan Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, SLFRF, between the City County of Butte Silver Bow and Montana Technological University Highlands College. The ARPA, or ARPA as we call it, Committee unanimously approved moving this grant request to the Council of Commissioners for approval. Danette Gleason.
Sure. Madam Chair, Commissioners, as Madam Chair spoke earlier, Chief Executive Gallagher was very pleased and really honored to be able to announce this grant. I wish he was here tonight too, to announce it. It's one of the first times in many, I guess in many, many years, not the first time, but in many years that we've done this type of collaboration with Montana Tech and actually Montana Technology University now and more directly to Highlands College. It's just such a great opportunity for us now to move forward and approve this or hopefully make recommendation for you to approve this grant fund in the amount of million, a million dollars. Chancellor is here tonight, Les Cook, and then as well as Karen Vandevere, who is the interim dean at Highlands College. And I believe Karen will be coming forward now to give you more, a little more information on the different elements of this grant. Before I close here though, I would like to also acknowledge Bernie Phelps and Joanne Lee, who are representatives at Montana Tech, who have really been instrumental in helping me do this sub-recipient agreement. We did a lot of work together over the last few weeks and I really do appreciate their help.
Thank you. Ms. Vandevere, this floor is yours.
Madam Chair, Council of Commissioners, my name is Karen Vandevere and I have the privilege of being the interim dean at Highlands College. I started when COVID hit and I haven't been able to leave yet. And it's been a great experience. I'm also, my day job is Director of Nursing at Tech and so we have all kinds of fun things going on. We came to the Butte Silver Bow Government with an ask and a proposal to present to help with workforce development. Our Highlands College is a premier regional center and what we do is workforce development and we do workforce-ready students. So we work with industry to see what they need and we ramp up programs and we put them together. I am not here tonight by myself and I certainly did not do this project by myself. So I have about 10 people that are in the background here that have been at both the ARPA committee meeting and are here this evening, plus a whole lot more of support that is out south of Butte and Highlands College. What we decided that we could do is that we could work as a partner to identify some workforce needs, some economic development for our community and that we could support each other. And so some of our proposals that we put together are as follows, and I'm not going to go through all of them, just kind of give you a short summary. Our construction technology, real exciting, we're changing it. We are going to do an outdoor classroom. We are going to build modular homes. So our students will come into Montana Tech's Highlands College in the construction program. The first year, they will do the framing, the windows, the roof. The second year of their program, they will do the finishing, the insulation, the cabinetry, et cetera. They will know from concept to completion how construction works. Then they will be job-ready to go out to help with our community with the needs of construction. Our welding and our machining, we're real excited. We bought simulators for welding and it, what we are doing is a sheet of metal is $800. And now we can take welding simulators, have the students practice on those, and when they test out, use a piece of metal. And it's going to save a lot of money in consumable supplies. We're looking at all the way from commercial to our large-scale industry, to our fabrication and our welding, supplying machinists, doing welding, taking our simulator out to places to do hands-on learning. We would like to eventually take all of our curriculum and convert it to online so that we could be competency-based, self-paced. Anyone that works in any type of industry could become a welder, a machinist, et cetera. They could take the online portion at home and then they could come up in, out to us in the evenings or the weekends for the hands-on portion. The automotive technology, everything's going green. We need to buy a hybrid car, we need to do electrical circuits, we need to upskill our community and we need to teach our students the current way that the automotive is going. We're looking at information technology and cybersecurity. We're actually announced today that we are doing a $16,000 grant from Cyber Montana and we're bringing middle school kids, kids, 7th and 8th graders for a week out to Highlands College and we're going to teach them cybersecurity and different things with the computer, not just how to play the games, more intense. We also are taking some of the proposal, the, in our proposal, the money to upgrade some of our labs so that our graduates are ready to protect your businesses and industry and have the knowledge in, for cybersecurity, IT, web development, web design. Healthcare is wide open. Our RadTech program is expanding. We're going to start doing some clinicals in Great Falls. We will do online education and then we'll do some of the RadTech in Great Falls, in Butte, in Miles City and sky's the limit. Certified Nurse Assistant is a real need in our community. We are offering those classes for zero credit for the community and in this proposal, we put in for a school to work. So that means we're going to take juniors and seniors, students that will be 18, that think they're interested in going into healthcare. We will scholarship them, we will put them through, they will be certified nurse assistants. They can work during the summer, they can work during school. Our goal is, success is how the student defines success. So if I have a student that thinks that they want to be a nurse or go into medical school, they take the CNA course and they say, "That isn't for me, that's successful." They found out early. Plus, if they love it, then we are going to have over the two years, 24 high school students that will be able to be certified nurse assistants. Last year, we partnered with Butte Silver Bow for lifeguard training. We plan to do that again. Tech has a pool. I don't know if it's real warm, but it has a pool. And we took a weekend, we had a weekend course and we were able to supply the needed lifeguards for the most beautiful ridge water park, water park in the state. And we need lifeguards for the splash park, for the water park, and so we will be, continue to do that. Our civil engineering technology program, the, we had an industrial advisory board this morning and they said, "You can't change anything with it, it's perfect." There are land surveyors and they're boots on the ground. They're the ones that are doing the sampling and doing the CAD work. And so we will just continue to look at that program to see how we can support it with software and how we can expand it if that's what the community needs. We have in here a heavy equipment simulator. So what that is, is that the students will come and they will learn to use heavy equipment before they get hired on the job. We're looking at maybe doing that as an endorsement to tag on to our construction, our civil engineering, our CDL program so that our students on their resume have heavy equipment endorsement, that they could operate some of the large equipment. The other thing is we are really excited, we started a CDL program. We've had two community sections and 100% have passed and they all have a job and we will continue to do that and also to integrate more of the CDL in our line program. We have the only line program in the state. We're hoping to increase that program to double it with enrollment within the next year and we will use these simulators to help with that. Very lean on positions. There is a halftime position for a community relations industrial partner and workforce developer to somewhat tag up, work with industry, identify needs, work on developing internships and apprenticeships and job placement. And then in the summer, we will have to do the electrical and the plumbing for the modular homes. The modular home concept is after they're finished, we will sell them. We will develop some type of criteria and so our community can purchase these homes. And then we will use the money to buy the, the building packages to continue to do that. And so we hope that that will help with some of the housing prices, although it'll take a little while to build the homes, but once we get going, it'll be great. So I would open it up for any questions and anything that I can't answer. I hope one of my colleagues, my construction people are here and there's a lot of other support that could help answer your questions.
Thank you, Karen. I just want to say that there is a silver lining around every cloud and when we got this ARPA money, you know, it's part of the federal government's assistance because we did have job issues and we had problems with businesses and the COVID, not to mention, of course, you know, and our lives were thrown upside down. But this sort of thing is so, it's, it's just so awesome, really, and this particular program, I would like to say thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions for Karen or anybody else? Commissioner Callahan.
Thank you, Ms. Vandevere. I just want to thank you and Montana Tech and all your staff because everybody knows this country's got a huge shortage of skilled labor. And it looks like you guys are stepping up to the plate and helping to solve that problem and we certainly appreciate it. Our town could use some more of that skilled labor and we appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thatcher?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Karen, thank you for being here. Just want to say thank you. I want to say thank you to you, all Montana Tech, the ARPA Committee, Danette, her office. I mean, I'm sure this proposal and stuff was no easy task and ARPA money in itself has a lot to sort through, so I just want to say thank you for your time, your effort and I think that this is a great thing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Karen? Thank you. Thank you very much, Karen.
Thank you.
Director Gleason? Change of command here?
Madam Chair, just wanted to close, I wanted to make sure I'd given enough time for Karen to present to you and then any questions, but just wanted to clarify, the, this fund was separate from our community grant proposal. As you know, Madam Chair is sitting on the ARPA Committee. We've been working with Highlands College before we started the process for our community grant project. Also just wanted to state that we did receive, Madam Chair alluded to the funding that we received for this grant from the U.S. Treasury as part of the American Rescue Plan Act. We did receive $15.7 million. This will be funded out of there. It definitely meets the criteria. We've talked a lot about the requirements of meeting criteria for this funding and also the reporting and that's why your document that you received in your packet was so many ma, so many pages long. This does qualify under the job training for individuals and workforce development under the economic development section of the U.S. Treasury guidelines, the final rule as well as the interim guidelines. When we began the process, we were working with the interim final rule and now as of April 1st, we started underneath the final rule of the U.S. Treasury. So it does meet all the qualifications.
Thank you. Any further questions for anybody? Commissioner Shea?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Karen and Director Gleason. Really great presentation. I know the committee had a really good understanding of what you were going to be doing and I hope that the commissioners all do too. I think this is something that will definitely benefit the entire community. The committee certainly felt that way, recommending it. So at this time, I would like to... So at this time, I would like to, for, in regards to Communication Number 2022-187, I would make a motion to concur and place on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to concur with Communication Number 2022-187 and place this on file. Is there anything further on the question? Would everyone please vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Ten ye, zero nae.
Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. All right. All right, moving on to the next segregated communication. We are on Item 23, Communication Number 2022-195. But before that, we did, as you know, we, we added in a public, we added in an item not addressed on the agenda, which was Communication Number 2022-202. And we'll go along with that one first because that actually is the more complete version. The one that we have on the communication here in, in the agenda, we'll address in a minute. But with the changes and the additions, with more documentation that we received from both our, Mike Archer, the Director of Capital Solutions for Headwaters and for the BLDC, and also Ray Rogers. So at this time, Mr. Archer here. There he is. I saw you. Mike is our new financial guru. And he's jumped right in with both feet. So Mike, if you don't mind just giving a little breakdown on this and then I'll call on Ray. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, councilors. We are, the BLDC is requesting permission to lend $221,959 as part of an $881,937.
Thank you, Michelle.
Total financing package to the Praxis Sim Holdings LLC, which will be used to purchase membership units in the Praxis Sim Center LLC, or the ownership of the, the business. The membership units are currently fully owned by Big Sky Select Properties. An interim financing partner, Praxis Sim Center LLC owns approximately 1.8 acres of land in Uptown Butte, which will be the collateral for this loan. The purchase price of the membership units is $887,836, which is to be paid for with $221,959 of the Anaconda Arco funds, $528,000 from other BLDC loan funds, and $137,000 from, and some change from the borrower. The loan committee, the Anaconda Arco Loan and BLDC Loan Committee approved this loan at its April 14th loan committee meeting. And the BLDC Board of Directors approved it via an email vote on April 15th. The purpose of the loan is to secure this property, which will be used to build the proposed Praxis Center, which is a rural healthcare training facility in Uptown Butte. Collateral will be a first deed of trust against, against the property. And until construction begins, at which point we will subordinate the debt to, to the construction financing. We will have a shared first lien position between the BLDC and the Anaconda Arco Loan. Ray Rogers will provide a personal guarantee as well as a life insurance assignment in the amount of $750,000 to BLDC. Praxis Sim Holdings has a loan payable to the National Center for Healthcare Informatics with a balance of $775,000. The loan has no security, a 1.2%, 1.26% interest rate, and deferred payments for three years. There are no other, there's no other financing associated with the business. The Anaconda Arco loan will be paid per the attached Anaconda Arco promissory note in, in your package. So I guess with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Mike? Okay. Oh, Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate the information. Just, just want to clarify on the, forgive me if you, if you said it and I missed it, just the, as far, what position we'll be in, we'll be in first position, correct?
Right, a shared first position until construction starts, at which point we'll, we'll grant the first position to the construction financing.
Follow-up, Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you. A shared, a shared first position. So can you clarify that?
Mr. Archer?
Yes, we will, we'll have an intercreditor agreement in place between the two organizations that, and a subordination agreement in place that, that clarifies that any, any proceeds that we get from the sale of the collateral will just be distributed on a pro rata basis to, to the entities.
Okay, anything further? Commissioner O'Neil? Okay, thank you. Any other questions about the loan and the promissory note and the other documents attached? Okay, I thought I'd give Mr. Rogers an opportunity to speak about the Praxis Center. How's that sound? Thank you. Ray?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And members of the council, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight on behalf of the Praxis Project. This loan request is, is really important to us at this point in time. We did have a interim capital partner, Big Sky Select out of Great Falls, that came forward in 2019 to help us purchase the land. We purchased all the land for the Praxis Center at the end of 2019. And that capital partner now would like to remove themselves from that position. We have had a significant amount of success in a capital raise since beginning of November. We want to retain a lot of that equity so that we can get our architects started in the next month or so. So we're asking the BLDC, or have asked the BLDC for a loan to allow us to purchase the membership interest or the, all the membership units in Praxis Sim Center. I'm actually, the Praxis Sim Center is, is where all of the land is, is titled. I'm the member manager of that legal entity. But Big Sky Select out of Great Falls owns 100% of the membership interest. What we're doing now is purchasing that back so we're the full owner of that land so that we can move forward with the project. And compliments to Mike Archer and the folks at BLDC for all their, all their work on this. And I'm glad to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Ray? Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This might be even another question for Mike. And maybe you can answer this, Ray. I guess how much money is in the, in the revolving loan fund? With that, I have a two-part question with that. What, what is the total debt on this loan then, after you combine them? That's what I'm confused by the, in the, like, all the documents. Like, one thing you mentioned too on the, with the life insurance and the personal guarantee, like, I just, it just doesn't make any sense to me. Unless I'm looking at the wrong stuff. It's just all broken up. So I just, I, I'm confused by the, by all of them. If you could help me out there, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And I apologize, we've, we, we haven't done one of these loans in about seven years, I think. So we were trying to piece together how, how it was done in the past. But yes, we'll, we'll have two, two loans done. One with BLDC for a little over $600,000. And this one with, with Anaconda Arco for the $221,959. So the total financing is that $881,937 figure. And then in, in the Anaconda Arco revolving loan fund, there's currently about $700,000 that's available to lend.
Follow-up, Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I just hope when, I guess who reviews the, the loan documents after you guys put these together? Because, I mean, again, I'm, I just don't, I'm not following them. And I'm definitely no expert by no means. But I just, I don't, I don't, especially now you just told me this is the first time you've guys done one, seven years. I just hope that, I don't know if the county attorney's looking at this or who, because I put the county attorney on the spot here, but.
Yes, so we do have, we do have an attorney prepare our loan documents. This promissory note is, is sort of an abbreviated version of it, just to indicate the, the total amount of the loan and interest rates and repayment. But yes, we're, we're, the loan documents will be based on the URA loan documents that we prepared for them. But we're more than happy to have the, the county attorney review them if, if that's what you'd like.
Follow-up, Commissioner O'Neil?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So these aren't the, these loan documents that we're looking at aren't the correct ones? That, these are just like sample ones or?
So this is the, the promissory note. We can, we can use this promissory note. But typically, we, we rely on a much more detailed promissory note. This is based off of the sample that we, that was provided for the, the last loan that we did.
Follow-up, Commissioner O'Neil and then Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With that being said, I guess I'm, I would, I think we need to, I, I, I would hate to, hate to be the bearer of bad news. But it's hard for, for, for me to approve something like this when we're not looking at the actual documents. Like even some of the things you said, the personal guarantee from Mr. Rogers and the life insurance, I'm seeing that in here. I just don't think it's fair to, I, I'm speaking for myself. It's not fair to just go off of information and then we approve it and then you guys sign a different documents. I mean, who knows, who knows what position you could be in? Who knows? I mean, I just don't think that's fair to us to, to move forward with that.
So before Commissioner Reardon, I was going to ask County Attorney or Danette if they, if they have any input on this. From that standpoint, I thought that we would, we had a completely valid document to go by. Commissioner Reardon and Commissioner Sarge. Eileen, excuse me, County Attorney Joyce?
Madam Chair, so yes, we did have a conversation with Mr. Archer. And the Finance and Budget Office provided him with the sample promissory note that was used when the Anaconda Arco Loan Fund granted a loan to McKenzie River, I believe. And so that, he did indicate obviously that there would be additional loan documents that provide more detail. And that would be required to be signed by the chief executive. So that would come back before the council for you to authorize him to sign those addition, the loan documents that provide the additional details. So this communication authorizes that process to move forward.
Commissioner Reardon and Commissioner Sarge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm a little bit confused too. The way I understand it is that the security on this loan is the land itself, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so we're looking at 1.8 acres as security?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and the current value of that is $800,000 or is it more?
$804,000 and some changes, yes.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Sarge.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. It was going to be my question. What was the appraised value of that 1.8 acres?
Yeah, that would be that $804. So that was a comparative market analysis that was prepared for that.
Thank you.
Any further question? All right. I understand that the communication, whatever the motion should include, authorizing the chief executive to sign the document. Is that correct? County Attorney Joyce? When it comes down. Director Gleason?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Commissioner O'Neil's to some of his points and questions too. We were under the understanding that these documents that were presented to you will be included and inclusive of the final loan documents. That will include the collateral that was spoke about tonight, including the land and the guarantees that were in place, the position as well that has been stated. And then the dollar amounts, the threshold dollar amounts, of course, will never, will not change. And neither will the terms and the conditions. Where will we be receiving monthly payments? I do want to clarify, the local government is holding roughly $500,000 in the Anaconda Arco Loan Fund. Not sure if there's been some payments made to the BLDC in the Anaconda Arco Loan Fund and they haven't been remitted to the county. But right now, we're holding $500,000. But back to the question on the forms that were presented to you, the promissory note, the loan document, and then some of the additional forms that were added in, under the new communication, were all part of loan packages that had been previously adopted by this council with then further update of loan agreements once everything has been finalized.
Okay. County Attorney, could you advise how the motion should read?
Madam Chair, I think the, the motion could be to concur with the request and authorize the chief executive to sign the loan approval form. Because you're not authorizing him to sign the additional loan documents until they're prepared and presented later.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that we did that correctly, so. Commissioner Shea, no pressure.
County Attorney Joyce, will you say that one more time? I just want to make sure we get it right. And my, and my other question is, I just want to make sure we're doing it in the right order because we had a previous communication. This is a correcting communication. And we're voting on the one that we suspended the rules for, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Shea, the motion could be to concur with the request and authorize the chief executive to sign the loan approval form?
Okay, so with that, I will make a motion to concur with the request and authorize the chief executive to sign the loan approval form.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to concur with 20, Communication 2022-195 and to authorize, oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. 2022-202 and to authorize the chief executive to sign the documents. And is there anything else on the question?
One last thing.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just commented and going out to the, the whole, whole thing of what we're doing, you know, we're, we're 100% loan to value here, right? And I, I know we're praying that this thing goes through. So it's, it's like a, you know, it's, it's a big deal, right? That I hope, I hope this thing's going to go through. I hope it's going through. I pray to God. But like, it is, the loan here is, you know, it's, and I know that's what we're supposed to do. That's what these funds are for. We're forced to risk and, and make things happen. I just want to publicly say that, man, I hope this thing's going to happen. I hope, I hope she happens, so thank you.
Anything else on the question before I call for the vote? Would everyone please vote? Would anyone care to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Nine ye, one nae.
Motion passes. Onward to Item 24. This is Communication, oh, excuse me. Now, now we need to take care of Communication Number 2022-195. I'll read it. This is the original communication that was on the agenda. But it is actually being, it's, it's going to not stay on the books. We're going to place it on file. But just so you understand that we just talked about, had the complete documentation, everything attached to it. And so it supersedes this original communication. So I will just ask Commissioner Shea if she would just do me the honors on this one as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Would you, do you want me to read the title?
You, you could do that.
Okay, so regarding Number 23, Communication Number 2022-195, Mike Archer, Director of Capital Solutions, Headwaters RC&amp;D and BLDC requesting Council of Commissioners approval to use Anaconda Arco loan funds in the amount of $221,959 as part of an $881,937 total financing package to Praxis Sim Holdings LLC, which will be used to purchase the membership units in Praxis, Praxis Sim Center LLC. Loan fees and an interest reserve will be paid with other BLDC loan funds. As Madam Chair stated, we did, we did just vote on a, a separate communication that we just need to note this one and place on file. So I will make a motion at this time to note Communication Number 2022-195 and place on file.
Second.
Motion and a second to, to place a note in place, Communication 2022-195 on. Motion in a second to, to place, a note in place, communication 2022-195 on file. Is there anything on the question? Everyone please vote. Anyone care to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote? Yep. That's interesting.
Ten yea, zero nay.
Motion passes, okay. Moving on to item 24, this is the last item that we have segregated, this is communication number 2022-196, Michelle Shea, Commissioner District 2, requesting Council Commissioners authorization for Chief Executive Gallagher to sign the attached economic development mill levy contracts. On March 16th, 2022, the Council Commissioners approved the allocation of existing economic development mill levy funds to 12 organizations. Those organizations include Montana Folk Festival, Advantage Butte, Alpha Technology, Motherlode Theater, the Myra Blot Cabbage Patch Project, Mile High Little League, Spirit of Columbia Gardens, Dumas Brothel Project, Montana Gala Cultural Society, Main Street Uptown Butte Trees Project, Pest Notify, Robert Edwards Butte Literacy Program. The Community Development Office, in coordination with the County Attorney's Office, completed the attached contracts that include the council-approved grant amounts. Commissioner Shea?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to pull this out and let the council know that there were 12 requests for funding, and we funded 11, and so with that, I would make a motion to cross-reference this communication, number 2022-196, with communication number 2022-132, which was the original communication that listed the awards, and concur and place on file.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to cross-reference communication 2022-196 with communication 2022-132, and places on file. Anything on the question? Commissioner Anderson?
I really don't think this will go anywhere, but I just wanted to say a few things on this. First off, I want to thank Commissioner Michelle Shea for doing a fabulous job with this committee and, and getting everything organized and put together on this. If you do look at some of the funding on some of these projects, I, I was opposed to it then, I voted against it, and I still have quite a few issues with that, so at this point, I'll make a substitute motion to deny this and to send it back to committee for review.
I believe it just died for lack of a second. All right, going back to Commissioner Shea's communication, to cross-reference, as I said, 2022, not 195, with 2022-202, and places on file. Anything further on the question? Would everyone please vote? Would anyone care to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Ten yea, zero nay.
Motion passes, okay. Moving along, we are going to section five, this is on page eight of our agenda. This is ordinances and resolutions for emergency suspension of the rules for final passage. Commissioner Frederiksen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move for the suspension of the rules for the purpose of passing resolution number 2022-08, resolution number 2022-24, and resolution number 2022-25 by waiving subsection 7 of rule 36 of the Rules of Order of Business of the Council of Commissioners, thereby having it considered for advanced passage without reference to the Judiciary Committee.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to move resolutions 2208, 22, 2022-24, and 2022-25 to the final passage without going through Judiciary and emergency suspension. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Would anyone care to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Ten yea, zero nay.
Motion passes. Item 1, resolution 2022-08, would the clerk please read the title?
A resolution amending the budget during the fiscal year after conducting a public hearing at a regularly scheduled meeting on the, of the Council of Commissioners in accordance with section 7-6-4006 MCA, appropriating unanticipated revenue to the City, County of Butte Silver Bow from the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services, public to be used within, within the Health Department for disease intervention and providing for an effective date herein.
Commissioner Frederiksen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to place resolution number 2022-08 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to move resolution 2022-08 to final reading. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Would anyone care to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Ten yea, zero nay.
Motion passes. Item 2, resolution 2022-24, would the clerk please, please read the title?
A resolution authorizing the sole source purchase of repair items for the UV disinfection system for the City, County of Butte Silver Bow, Metro Sewer Division, and providing for an effective date herein.
Commissioner Frederiksen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to place resolution number 2022-24 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to move resolution 2022-24 to final reading. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Would anyone care to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Ten yea, zero nay.
Motion passes. Item 3, resolution 2022-25, would the clerk please read the title?
A resolution authorizing the sole source purchase of smart sensor traffic control software for the City, County of Butte Silver Bow, Roads Division, and providing for an effective date herein.
Commissioner Frederiksen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to place resolution number 2022-25 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to move resolution 2022-25 to final reading. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Ten yea, zero nay.
Motion passes. Section 6, ordinances and resolutions for final passage. Item 1 is resolution 2022-20, would the clerk please read the title?
A resolution authorizing and approving the transfer of the real property described as Lot 9 of Block 3 of the Trevonia Fraction, located at 322 West Gold, parcel number 411, 441800, in the City of, County of Butte Silver Bow, Montana, to Melissa Odell, in accordance with the laws of the state of Montana and the provisions of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code, and providing for an effective date herein.
Commissioner Frederiksen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to place resolution number 2022-20 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to move resolution 2022, 2022-20 to final passage. Is anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Any questions? Anybody care to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Ten yea, zero nay.
Motion passes. Item 2, resolution 2022-22, would the clerk please read that title?
A resolution amending the budget during the fiscal year after conducting a public hearing at regularly scheduled, at a regularly scheduled meeting of the Council of Commissioners in accordance with section 7-6-4006 MCA, appropriating unanticipated grant revenue to the Butte Silver Bow Archives, Clark Chateau, from the National Endowment for the Arts for the purpose of commissioning 10 musicians to reinvent Butte mining and labor songs.
Commissioner Frederiksen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to place resolution number 2022-22 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to move resolution 2022-22 to final reading. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Anyone care to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Ten yea, zero nay.
Motion passes. Item 3, ordinance number 2022-01, council bill number 2022-01, would the clerk please read the title?
An ordinance repealing Title 18 of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code, BSBMC, entitled Flood Plane Regulations, Ordinance 89, 1979, in its entirety, and replacing it with a new title referencing the model regulations entitled Flood Plane Hazard Management Regulations, and providing for an effective date herein.
Commissioner Frederiksen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to place ordinance number 2022-01, council bill number 2022-01, on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to move ordinance number 2021, 22-01, council bill number 2022-01 to final reading. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Anyone changing their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Ten yea, zero nay.
Motion passes. At this time, I open up any public comment on any public matter not on tonight's agenda. Is there anything that needs to be said about anything on, that wasn't on tonight's agenda? Seeing none? Please note the calendar of other meetings and events coming up through, looks like through May 4th. Is there anything else to come before us tonight?
If I could...
Commissioner Anderson?
Could you please change my vote on 24? I did hit the wrong button on that, it should have been a no instead of a yea.
On 24, which one?
That was 22-196 that I made a motion to disapprove on.
Okay, would the clerk please note that 2022-196, Commissioner Anderson would like to change his vote?
To nay.
To, to nay, okay. Okay, I guess at this time, if there's nothing else, please keep JP and his family, and of course his daughter, in your prayers and thoughts, and I think he'll be back in a couple days. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to adjourn, thank you, everyone.